And we are live.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Community Development, Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. Councilmember Glomback?
Here.
Councilmember Farrelotto? Councilmember Rivera?
Present.
Councilmember Scanlon? Councilmember Wyatt?
Here.
Council President Pridgen?
Here.
Councilmember Bowman?
Here.
Councilmember Noakaski?
Here.
Councilmember Wingo?
Present.
Coram is present.
Okay, from the top, please.
Item number one, 2024 to 20, 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan and 2020 Annual Action Plan.
Items open.
Okay, this item is open. I understand there are, is a time constraint on this and we have representatives from various bodies. If any of my colleagues have any questions. Mr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brendan, I know we talked during the meeting, strategic planning meeting, and we talked about a number of things. Did you talk to this group? Because they just were on, in our finance committee meeting, and they said they hadn't talked to you regarding some of their recommendations, BN, BN CRC? From Sarah Wooten? Hello? Is Mr. Mahaffey on?
Mr. Chair, I don't see Mr. Mahaffey connected yet. However, there are several senior members of his team.
Okay.
They could yield the question. Otherwise, we can hold the ban while I get him on the line.
Can anyone else from his team talk about this letter that we received from Sarah Wooten with some of the recommendations regarding CDVG and Emergency Solution Grants Fund? Okay, holding the ban until it comes, fully calls.
Motion.
Seconded by Mr. Wyatt.
Item number two, Designated Developer Agreement, 204, 206, and 208 High.
Items open.
This item's open. Mr. President.
Yep. Thanks, Mr. Chair. It was supposed, the developer was invited to come online. I don't know if they are on.
Yes, sir. That's Mr. Curry, and he's on with several members of his team.
Oh, great.
He's off mute now. You can speak when ready.
Mr. Curry?
Yes, thank you for your time. Our team today with us consists of Dr. Greg Daniel, Chairman and CEO and owner of the proposed project. Greg Daniel Jr. is in charge of operations and property management and construction. Altonis Garner, responsible for community engagement and property management. And Sean Hopkins as General Counsel for the project.
So, Mr. Chair, if they could be allowed to just give us an overview of their intentions for 204, 206, and 208 High Street?
Okay.
Yeah, good afternoon. This is Sean Hopkins. Thank you, everyone, for providing us with this opportunity. So, we're really excited about this opportunity with respect to this property, obviously given its location. We did submit a detailed RFP, and we appreciate the city working very closely and collaborating with us. We're hopeful that we receive a recommendation to approve the designated developer agreement. Our goal is to provide affordable housing at this location. Obviously, will require a lot of community engagement and various approvals from the city. We do view this meeting as an important first step. We think we're more than up to the task of delivering a product here that everyone will be proud of, and we would welcome any questions. I don't know, Dr. Greg, you want to offer anything else in terms of the vision for the project?
Yeah, this.
Just have to state your name for the record, whoever's speaking.
Sir, this is Dr. Greg Daniel, and the project is called Bridging the Gap. About a year ago, I had discussions with Mr. Jody Lameo, the CEO of Collider. And one of his concerns was that some of his, many of his lower-level employees did not have proper housing and had worked at Collider for quite a few years. And the objective was getting appropriate ownership, or should I say living conditions, for these employees that would work in areas such as housekeeping at the hospital. So, the objective of this bridging the gap is to bridge the gap between the Fruit Belt community and the medical campus in that much of the housing would be provided to employees that work within the medical campus and cannot afford the higher-end housing that's available maybe in the suburban region or other high-end regions of the city of Buffalo.
Mr. Chair, this project, this building has been sat vacant in the Fruit Belt, one of the most dilapidated buildings in the Fruit Belt. It has been a heavy lift. I do commend the Real Estate Department and all of OSP. They, they worked together. They put this out. They have found, I believe, a very responsible building team. Dr. Daniels has been involved in, in projects in the city and outside of the city and has utilized his resources. But to hear about affordable housing in an area that has seen blight and making sure workforce housing actually, for the workforce, that, you know, that the lower rung of, of the income and to keep them in that neighborhood, this is what this community has called for and asked for. To the team, I would just say the word, two words that you used are very important in this community, and that is community engagement. If you don't engage them, I promise you, they'll engage you. So, I encourage you to engage them early in the process. I know it may be difficult during a time like this, but engage them, engage them, engage them. In that way, the process goes a lot smoother, as I'm sure many of you who are in that room understands. And I see Brendan is on, but I do commend his team for doing what they have done to find a responsible bidder. So, thank you, Brendan, and thank you, Mr. Chair. What would you like with that, Mr. President?
Oh, definitely to approve. Don't, don't keep it, don't keep it one hour longer than an hour. I wish we could approve it right now and send it right to them. Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by Council President Pridgen.
Motion to revisit item number one.
Motion to revisit item number one, seconded by Mr. Wyatt, who has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mahaffey, we had in finance, the BN, BN CRC group bring a list of issues regarding COVID and some of their challenges regarding providing rental housing, small business assistance, mom-and-pop landlords. Did you get an opportunity to talk to them?
We talked to a number of members of the Coalition and also one of the original signatories. As I'd mentioned during the workshop, I'd emailed twice, but I didn't get a response to that. So, in various capacities, not as a formal group, but certainly the, one of the signatories, I think the signatory, and then also a number of the organizations. So, Push, Belmont, and I'm sure there are just, I don't have the full list in front of me right now.
Okay.
And, and the process isn't over. I think it's important to say, because if I remember the letter correctly, it was CDBGCV, which is a source of funds that isn't before the council right now, and the public hearing hasn't been held on yet. So, that is a subsequent process, and it's parallel to the, to the annual action plan and the comm plan that's before you right now.
Okay. Well, I just want to say she was very emphatic that she hadn't been talked to in that this letter came out in May and is now in July. So, I'm hoping that you will definitely reach out to them for some very fair assessments. And I think we share with you some of our concerns regarding our community post-COVID or pre-COVID. We're in COVID right now. So, I really hope that you'll reach out to them. How many community meetings do we have regarding outreach?
Oh, well, for the CDBGCV, we, we've, I mean, at this point in time, in terms of the stakeholder meetings, there's been about three stakeholder meetings, and this is all preceding the actual public hearing, which there'll be a much broader invite to. And in addition to that, there's been dozens, literally dozens and dozens and dozens of phone calls to service providers throughout the community. Because of the COVID situation, as we talked about during your, your workshop or the council's workshop, we've really dug deep because, you know, it's a first, first-of-its-kind situation, and we've really tried to find a way to be as impactful as possible with this. So, the process is not over. In terms of the timing with, with council specifically, we'll be engaging you with the outline of that before the public hearing. At this point in time, I think that for the first meeting in September, you'll have the full budget, and then you'll also have the, the service providers that we think you will, that the city needs in order to deploy this money. But again, that's a parallel process to what's before you right now. What's before you is just the, the annual action plan and the comm plan for the standard money that we receive from HUD.
That's how much?
The, the dollars that are before you right now is about the $20 million. The CDBGCV is separate. That's 8.2. And I can go down. There's, there was also an ESGCV, which you, you've already approved. I think it was back in May that you approved those dollars. And then there's a CDB, excuse me, an ESGCV2, sorry, tons of acronyms. That, an ESGCV2, which will be before you next week. Again, it's expanding the amount of money that was already committed by the council for rapid rehousing and for rental assistance and items of those natures. So, we've got a lot of the dollars specifically targeted for the homeless or the people threatened or the individuals and households and families threatened with homeless, covered with ESG. And then CDBG will be, it will be more robust in terms of a larger population for, for that September conversation.
So, what's the drop, the deadline for this?
This item? This item, we'd like, we'd like it approved at the next meeting, because again, it's the, it's the standard annual action plan and comm plan meeting. We file it with the, with the federal government before August 15th.
Okay. Where, where are we with Eight Days of Hope?
Director Mestry isn't on the call, so I'd have to follow up with Director Mestry.
Okay. This is the second, almost the third year I'm asking for eight days of hope?
Sure.
You've added nine new agencies. I think you've seen the work that Eight Days of Hope can provide to residents. And I'm just fighting for ordinary residents that don't want to go through red tape. There's a lot of red tape with this whole process. And again, it's a slam dunk of an organization that doesn't have to worry about vendors, that doesn't have to worry about estimates and, and, and those type of things. They could actually just have the money for supplies, and their professional volunteers go through and do the work. And I think this is the third year I'm asking, and you know, you added nine new agencies, but Eight Days of Hope wasn't one of them. And so, I'm disappointed, because again, I explained to you, and I think you may be aware of the, the impact that they were able to make. You have on here 115 families that help with loans. Well, a lot of families can't afford loans, and a lot of families are outside the guidelines of what you offer. So, Eight Days of Hope can be a huge catalyst in every one of our districts to really help people who are in desperately, especially now. And so, for us not to have eight days of hope in the mix of $20 million says that, where do we, where are we with poor people? You know, and that's where I'm coming from sincerely. Where are we at with poor people? We have $20 million in an organization that has come through, that does, that builds communities is doesn't have one penny. And so, I would like to see them in this plan somewhere before we approve it, because I think that's what we can do effectively. All the other things, we got hoops, and we got to jump through hoops to get it done for ordinary people. But the people that this BNRC, BNRC is talking about, and the people who are being affected by this pandemic, people who don't have jobs right now, this is a great opportunity for us to be able to deliver something for them. And again, I can advocate for my district, but every one of our districts can use these resources. Because right now, I want to ask you, if you, if you had to quantify by district, how much money is going to each district? How much is going to the university district?
How much is going? Good.
Going to film more?
Yeah, we, we can break that down in terms of, again, the streets, the sidewalks, the community services. You know, we don't, we don't typically, we can break it down, but I don't have that exact number for you.
Okay. I, I think that's important, because again, I want to make sure, you know, I, I respect my colleagues, but I got to fight for my folks. And I need to make certain that we are being equitable in the distribution of these very, very valuable resources that may not be as available next year as they are this year. And so, I would love to have a breakdown of how this has been broken out, the $20 million by district, so that we can make a better decision. And I would love to see something for eight days of hope. And I know there's got to be some way that we can come up. I mean, they got $150,000 from M&amp;T, and they were able to help families, almost 500 families in my district. If we can't come up with two and a half million dollars for eight days of hope that can do something without red tape to the ordinary people who really right now needs this assistance, I don't know what we doing.
So, that's a conversation we'll have with Eight Days of Hope. Again, in, in terms of this and what you talk about is, as we say often, you know, we, we, we follow the, the rules that our grant funder gives us here. And so, we have to be, look at this in a way that I think what we were discussing with Eight Days of Hope and other organizations like that. There are a lot of other organizations that, that do good work in, in the city of Buffalo that wrap around with things like streets and sidewalks and, you know, other elements to make sure that a lot of the challenges that come along with the deployment of these dollars do not slow down in any way, shape, or form the, the money and the activity and the energy that Eight Days of Hope is, is, is able to generate. That, again, that, that will come through the, the conversation and we'll follow up right after this in terms of the conversation with Eight Days of Hope.
Yeah. Brendan, I need that to happen, because again, you know, I'm trying to be trusting of folks, but sometimes we're too trusting, and you know what? We get what we get. I'm going to bring up to you again, something that's still in my behind, is that we, we expected inclusionary zoning, and it didn't happen. We were put to sleep about it. Well, I'm not going to be asleep on this one, because again, people are desperately needing assistance, and we need to make sure we deliver on this. The red tape, whatever the red tape is, you guys can figure it out, how to get around that. I'm, I'm sure you're professional enough and you've done enough expertise that we can get around that. For a couple of, $50,000, $500,000 for eight days of hope, that the impact can be dramatic. I'm not talking about people having to wait in line and wait a year to get resources that were, they applied for last year. I'm talking about if we put $500,000 in front of them, within 60 days, that $500,000 will be spent, and people will be impacted dramatically right then and there within 60 days. So, I'm sure there's some way that $20 million, $20 million that we can get 500,000 for this organization to really help a poor community. Because at the end of the day, people have been beating us up about the inner city and how they're not resources for us. But we build up downtown, and we don't see a lot of things happening in the inner city. And I don't want to, I don't care what nobody tells me. I know what people tell me, and I know what I see. And I can count on a number, on one hand, a number of projects that have come from strategic planning in my district. And I want to see more, not just sidewalks and paving. I want to see more. And so, we have to push you and push your organization so that we have more in our districts. I don't know if it's equitable. I, I don't think so, but I want to see the numbers to show me that. Because if I don't push for more, I'm going to continue to get what I get, and my district needs more. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Rivera?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Brendan, I agree with Rashid with regards to quantifying what it is that is coming from your department and different programs. I have no way of knowing exactly what happens in terms of, in proportion of what's happening throughout the city, what is happening in my respective district. And I'm sure there are council members that would like to know what are, what's happening in their respect in terms of scope of work and not just sidewalks and street. I'm talking about everything that you weave together through Bureau, through the block grant, all these streams of funding that somehow make it through the different districts. We, we have no way of quantifying exactly what's happening in our districts in, in terms of proportion. I mean, I like to know that I'm treated as well as any other district in the city of Buffalo, and I have no reason to doubt it, but still want to know and, and need that information. The other thing that I'm, that I brought up at the last meeting was the planning process. You know, we're not included. As far as a council member, I rarely get a call from any of the program managers or from OSP saying, "Mr. Councilmember, you know, we're looking to do something in your district. We're looking on affordable housing. We're looking at something..." Whatever the funding stream is, I don't know how many funding streams go through you, but I would want to be involved in the planning process, because it's there where decisions are made. You have a planning process, and then you have your community meetings. And basically, even after the community meetings, whatever you decide during the planning process, that's what normally is going to happen. So, we have to be involved early on in the planning process to make sure that we're included. And you agreed at the last meeting to do this with the council members, to sit with.
Absolutely.
You agreed?
No, I think, I think in August, I think last time you talked about a, a drive-through, I'm, I'm happy to do, you know, a ride, or ride-along, maybe is the, is the better phrase to use, you know, in, in August with, with each of you and continuing. Absolutely happy to do that.
I agree with the, the drive-through, and I accepted the invitation. However, in terms of the, the actual dollars and cents, what's actually making its way into our respective districts in terms of proportion, that is something that I would like to know more, to see that, make sure, you know, the city's nine districts. How do we proportion this? Whatever we're in, we're weaving all these funding streams together, how does that make it? And what's the proportion? Is it dealt with equitably? We don't know. It probably is, but we really don't know unless you provide us with that information. So, somewhere we have to be able to put that in writing, share it with the respective council members, so we know more or less, okay, we feel we're being treated equitably in terms of our respective districts.
Yeah, and we can provide that breakdown for you in, in, in terms of that. Again, the focus is the low-to-moderate income neighborhoods, as we talked about, about before. So, in, in terms of, you know, equity versus equality, it's not that each district gets a ninth, right, of, of, of the funds. There are some districts that have more low-to-moderate income eligible areas than others. So, you will see more dollars going into those, those council districts in, in the city of Buffalo. But nonetheless, we can break that down so that you can see that distribution. But it is not a ninth, a ninth, a ninth, a ninth. And, and quite frankly, you know, that's, that's also something that HUD wouldn't tolerate. And I don't think, you know, because of the intent of the dollars. So, but we can break it down. That's my, you know, in terms of giving a sense of, of how the money's being spent in each of the districts.
And going back to, besides breaking it down by district, how much money is going into the district, the actual planning that goes on, where you make decisions, how money is spent, that is important to us, because there that we want to be involved, because it's during the planning process, because that's what really matters. Because once you've done it, and then you have your public meetings, I don't believe that there's much change made to the plans once you've had those and you present those. So, that's why we want to be involved early on in the planning process.
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Farrelotto, did you have a comment, or?
No, that's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak on this? Hey, if not, why don't we send this without rec to the full council because of the time constraint?
Motion to send without recommendation.
Seconded by Mr. Farrelotto.
Item number three, Encroachment on City Right of Way, 155 Richmond.
Motion is now to approve.
The motion is to approve, seconded by Mr. Pridgen.
Item number four, Minnesota Block Club Letter to Wyatt.
You can table.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, seconded by Mr. Wyatt.
Item number five, Plymouth Crossroads Statistics.
Items open.
This item is open. Did we have anyone here that wanted to speak on this?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a conversation with this gentleman, Mr. Gibson. He reached out to me because his organization is having some challenges with funding with transitional housing, homeless for homeless and young people. And I know when we had a conversation with Sue, she talked about that transition and hopeful that we can have some funds available for this group. Many of these young people come from my district, and I'm very passionate, because I listened, watched a video and saw many of them, a number of them whose lives were changed because of this organization. These are the type of organizations that we must have, that we must continue to fund even during this pandemic, because these are the individuals that sometimes are taken off the wrong path, being taken off the right path and taking the wrong path, because they don't have support. So, I want to give Mr. Gibson an opportunity to talk, and I know Sue was on the line to see if there's any way that we can assist them. But, Mr. Gibson, if you can just say your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Daniel Gibson, Senior. I am the Program Coordinator of Plymouth Crossroads. Again, as Councilman Wyatt said, we house youth males from the age of 16 to 20. We are a volunteer program. We assist young men. We teach them life skills. We, we do anything and everything to help get these young men back on the right path. The problem we have in is, is that I don't know if it's because we're located in Lancaster, but majority of our referrals are from zip codes of 14, 14215. A lot of inner-city youth come to our program because they want to change, they want to get out of that element, learn some different life skills, so that way we teach them. And, and we have given them the opportunity to go back and maybe teach this and share this information with other youth, try to help get them on the right path. But we've been open since 2011. We've gone through 100 and almost 170 young men. And again, it is volunteer. They do not have to come here, but they choose to come here because it's what we offer them. We're just looking for some assistance, the way to keep our program, our doors open, because these young men are asking us, and we've dealt with a lot of different organizations who utilizes our services, but unfortunately, somehow we get overlooked. And we just come into you guys and pleading with you, is there any way, anyhow, to just keep our organization going? Because these young men really do ask for our services. And I have a list here of many different zip codes that we get referrals from. It's not just, it's from Chictawaga, it's from Dupuy, it's from the west side of Buffalo, it's from other states that we get referrals from other individuals, because they hear about our program. We do what we can with the education, the health, we get them in college, we help them with getting jobs. We do what we do to try to make these things work for our guys and get them, get them off the streets and give them another chance at life. So, we asking, is there anything or any way that we can receive some services from, from the city to keep our program going? Thank you.
Mr. Wyatt, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, and Mr. Gibson, I want to say that there are a number of individuals in your program that are transgender, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because I know that that's a piece also that I was hopeful that maybe we can assist. And I know your, your facility is out in Lancaster, but like I said, you know, and I know, and I got some of the numbers from you. Many of them come from my, my, my district, and I spoke to one of the young men who was, lived in, on one of the streets in my district, and he talked about, had he not found your program, that he probably would be on the streets homeless. And so, I know that this is not the usual, because you are in Lancaster. We want to make sure we support. But sometimes, as he said to me, being out of the element of the inner city was something that helped him. So, I know Sue Lamedu was on, and maybe she can give us any type of insight, if that's something that's a, that's possibility or, or not. So, Mr. Chair, if she could speak.
Sue Lamedu, if you're available, if you have a comment, please feel free to chime in.
Certainly, yep. Hi, this is Sue Lamedu, Senior Planner in the Department of Community.
Certainly, yep. Hi, this is Sue Lamedu, uh, Senior Planner in the Department of Community Services. We have uh, we have a, a regular application process for our funding that goes on, on an annual basis. It usually starts about January and concludes in May, so we have just finalized our funding allocations. For the next round of ESG entitlement, which begins on October first of two thousand twenty. Um, so the first step in really getting funding is that you need to complete the application. Uh, not only do we have an RFP out or did we have an RFP out? But we also had a request for qualification that was um released as well for agencies looking for additional shelter money. Um, and Erie County also was looking for a provider, so I'm not sure who uh Plymouth Crossroads applied to. They certainly would be eligible um for these services as long as they were a shelter and not a transitional housing program. Because transitional housing is not eligible under the Emergency Solutions Grant. But um if um, if you would like to give um the man from Plymouth Crossroads my contact information. I'd be happy to work with them to kind of talk about what might be available, what, who we might be able to partner with. To be able to help them provide services. I know that I have spoken to their Board President a while back about getting. Uh, a reimbursement from Erie County uh for the nightly shelter that they're providing those young men. So I'm not sure if they went further with that, but that's another option for funding for them. So please feel free to reach out to me, we can uh kind of walk through where you are and see where you need to go for. Possible future funding opportunities.
Thank you, thank you. We would definitely, if, if I could definitely get your information, I would share that with my executive director and we will try to move forward with this.
Uh, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sue.
Okay, thank you. Rashid, what do you want to do with this? Table it or?
Just table, table, sir.
Motion is to table seconded by Mr. Rivera.
Thank you.
Item number six, comments on the draft consolidation plan and annual action plan.
Think we can receive and file that?
Motion is to receive and file.
Motion is to receive and file seconded by uh Mr. Wyatt.
Item number seven, special run to pick up electronics and tires.
Items open.
This item is open? Um, Mr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I know as we talked last week about uh electronics and tires. Um, I'm driving into City Hall and I saw five big old tires in the middle of the street. Um, so hopefully um Mike Finn is on to talk about if they've had any movement or the idea of what. Um, we could do to address that. In the meantime, I know he's, you know, we just sprung it on him last week, but if he has any input.
Commissioner Finn? I think you're on mute if you're still there. Mr. Finn?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner, there was a question about uh, um, I know you heard it from Mr. Wyatt.
Yeah.
Could somebody try to contact Mr. Finn by phone to let him know that he's on?
Yes, we'll, we'll reach out offline, sir, if you want to.
Yeah, this is Nolan Skipper, I can, I can call him real quick. Okay, great, thank you. Should we hold this in abeyance, go on to the next one?
Sure. A motion to hold in abeyance?
Seconded by Mr. Noakowski.
Take from the table items eleven seventeen and twenty-nine?
Take from the table eleven seventeen and twenty-nine seconded by Mr. Wyatt.
Item number eleven, BPA B Recommendation Letter, June two thousand twenty.
Items open.
Okay, this item is open. Um, we have, I believe Mr. Booth is with us to speak on this.
Uh, yes, thanks for having me. Um, as most of you uh are aware, back in two thousand five. This body created the city's Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board. Um, our role, according to the city charter, is to review ongoing street projects. And provide recommendations on their implementation. So uh in May. The Public Works Department provided us with designs for four projects, including the Delaware Avenue Restriping Plans. The Downtown Entertainment District, uh, a couple of projects on the BNMC, including Virginia and Burton Streets. And the Bicycle Master Plan uh Phase One Projects. And while there are welcome safety improvements in all the designs. Uh, the overall consensus from the board is that they fall short in meeting the safety, health and environmental and equity goals. To meet the mayor's vision of putting Buffalo at the forefront of the mobility revolution that he talked about during this year's State of the City address. Um, the data that Go Bike has collected from twenty-four to twenty nineteen. Um, in the city of Buffalo as a whole, there's been over two thousand two hundred and forty-five crashes. Uh, resulting in injury or death involving pedestrians and cyclists on the streets. Um, and this number has maintained consistently um over the last four and a half years. Um, with physical safety concerns regarded as one of the most significant barriers to cycling. Here too, the burden of injury and risk is widely disproportionate in our community. Uh, we know, but we don't have the demographic data for the specific crashes that have occurred in the city of Buffalo. We do know nationally that Latino cyclists face mortality rates twenty-three percent higher than whites and for African Americans, they are thirty percent higher. In his introduction to the Bicycle Master Plan, Mayor Brown stated that despite the fact that neighborhoods of color have on average less access to automobiles. Than other neighborhoods, many of these same neighborhoods have lacked the resources and infrastructure to make riding a bicycle a safe and attractive option. And research consistently shows that sixty percent of people would ride more often if these facilities were available to them. So the recommendations provided to the Department of Public Works share this perspective. Um, and then of course the focus being consistently, you know, how can we make our streets safer for people that are out there walking and biking? Particularly those uh vulnerable populations uh throughout our city. Uh, so to date, the Bike Ped Board received feedback uh from the, uh, from. Department of Public Works on the recommendations we submitted on the BNMC. Um, which were, you know, they made some changes uh somewhere outside of the scope of work, but overall it was, it was a good project. Excuse me, uh, the Delaware Avenue Project was also uh considered a good project. There were some minor recommendations and of course there's still design work that is being done, particularly around some challenging areas like Gate Circle. Um, the Delavan Avenue Intersection and the Forest Avenue Intersection, uh, some recommendations provided there. Uh, but the uh, the Bike Ped Board still has not received feedback from the department on the recommendations sent there. I, I wanted to kind of call out the infrastructure improvements to the Downtown Entertainment District, Chippewa Street, Franklin Street and Court Street. Uh, the plans presented for these demonstrate many positive attributes towards developing safe, complete streets through lane narrowing. Lane reductions, wider sidewalks with bump outs, high visibility crosswalks, um, and the removal of parking in one side of the street uh from Chippewa. Uh, the combination of these treatments uh will certainly facilitate safe pedestrian travel and reduce speeds along the corridor. However, the current designs lack safe bicycle accommodations and uh in regards to Franklin Street in particular. Are inconsistent with the Bicycle Master Plan and do not consider the mayor's vision of putting Buffalo again at the forefront of this mobility revolution. Uh, we pulled the data on what is currently happening uh, uh, in downtown and looking at the report that was provided by. Uh, Buffalo Place uh and, and the surveys and information that they pulled. Uh, and when considering bicyclist design begs the question, are we designing for one percent of the population or seventy percent of the population? Um, so according to Buffalo Place's Downtown uh Access Plan on Bicycle Use. Currently, one percent of downtown employees report bicycle use as their primary mode of transportation for the commute between work and home. Which equates to about five hundred and fifteen downtown employees on a daily basis. Uh, when specifically asked how often they bicycle to work, two percent of employees, server respondents reported daily and two percent reported often. Which equates to about two thousand committed bicycle commuters. Uh, sixty-four percent of employee respondents reported owning a bicycle and twelve percent report that they have ridden to work at least once establishing a pool. Upwards of forty-four hundred potential regular cyclist uh commuters into downtown Buffalo on a daily basis. Um, based on the survey results, it is assumed that five hundred to two thousand employees are regular riders. And of those who ride to work, um, one percent ride daily, two percent ride often, equalling a hundred and. One thousand eight hundred and seventy-two committed cyclists. This is equal to the number of commuters utilizing a large parking ramp. At a development cost of anywhere between uh of thirty thousand dollars per space, it represents a savings of fifty-six million dollars not spent to provide more parking downtown. And while bicycle commuting is currently a small proportion of the downtown trip to work, it is growing. And can be encouraged with less expensive facilities than required by most other options. Uh, and yet downtown Buffalo has the largest percentage of bicycle injuries and fatalities in the entire city over the past five years. We looked at total crashes per census track, um, and the designs uh just, uh, will not increase bicycle ridership. And we believe from the board's perspective, may only lead to increase in injuries fatalities, um, adding conflicts. Yeah, I bring this up because while the recommendations were submitted. Uh, no responses received from the Department of Public Works on the recommendations, uh, and yet the, uh, the project has already gone out to bid. Um, lastly, the Public Works Department. I think has done a really great job of working towards some of the recommendations of the Bicycle Master Plan and received. Uh, back in two thousand sixteen, a Transportation Alternatives Program grant from the State Department of Transportation. Uh, to implement several of the catalyst projects that were identified in that plan. Uh, the catalyst projects were selected uh to focus on connections to existing bike facilities. Um, opportunity to induce new riders immediately, linkages to key destinations. Uh, equal distribution between east and west side neighborhoods, uh, because many of our routes now travel north to south. Um, and provide clear support from stakeholders, including members. And while some of the details of the project provide, provided. Uh, many of the positive attributes uh in the plan, uh, there were still several projects that were more of the aspirational. Uh, so, you know, including uh the cycle track on Delavan Avenue connecting to the work that's being done on Main Street as well as. Um, protected facilities on South Elmwood and others, um, focusing on, you know. What many consider kind of the lowest uh, uh, treatment, shared lane markings on several of downtown streets. Uh, which only indicates uh that bicyclists should share the road with cyclists and doesn't do anything to improve safety um or increase ridership. So I know that there's still work being done on design on these projects, but again, um, you know, the, from the Bike Bed Board's perspective. Um, which I am one member of, but the chair of, uh, there's still, you know, a lot of concern in terms of making sure that as a, as a city, as a community. Uh, the concerns of the community are really focusing on, you know, how are we improving safety on our streets considering that. Uh, the safety outcomes on our roadways have not improved um in the last four to five years. So with that, uh, if there's any questions, I'm happy to, to answer.
Mr. Wyatt, did you have your hand up or no? No, okay. Um, Mr. Finn, did, uh, Mr. Noakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you for your time, Mr. Booth. Did you or end up filing any traffic permits? I know that there are certain projects that, you know, spoken with Go Bike and with you regarding in the Old First Ward. I know there's one in Councilmember Wyatt's district on Bailey. I just wanted to know if, um, you know, you've got those permits so we could start getting some of those lines and crosswalks in.
Yeah, so separate from uh, uh, my role as Chair of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Board of the Council, I'm Executive Director at Go Bike Buffalo. Uh, we have received a number of grants through actually the State Department of Health and some, uh, actually some funding from several members here on, on the council. Um, as well to paint crosswalks um and refresh uh and maintain some of the existing facilities on the city streets. Um, there are a number of projects in all of your districts that we have submitted to the Department of Public Works for implementation. Um, the, we have yet to receive a permit, uh, and those have been submitted. I believe it's been upwards of three weeks at this point that we're still waiting to receive a response from Public Works for implementation. Uh, we have the community members and volunteers at the ready, we have the supplies actually all delivered. Um, and we're just waiting for approval of our permits to move forward.
Is it, is that good, Mr. Noakowski? Okay, Mr. Finn? Oh, and then Mr. Wingo.
Um, good afternoon. Uh, thank you uh for, for having me. First, I apologize about being before I, I'd, I'd walked away. And I'll, I'll be happy to go back to answer that other question that you had on, on that separate item. Um, certainly, you know, we are committed to increasing the safety of our roadway for all of our users. Uh, you know, we have been working with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board, uh, as long as I've been with the city and even going back before that. That was one of the first things um that I remember uh meeting Eric Schmarter when I started here in, in the city. Was getting his introduction to some of the work that he had been doing with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board. Um, to speak with specifically with uh some of the projects and our, our general. Uh, process with the Bike Ped Board, I'm going to ask Nolan Skipper, our, our city engineer. Um, to, to answer some of the questions that, uh, that Justin brought and to give kind of a, a general overview of, of the work that we've done. Um, with the Bike Ped Board.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, everyone. Um, and thank you, uh, Justin, um, for the, the detailed, um. Layout there. Um, to speak to your project specifically, uh, I think you did mention, um, we had given you feedback. Um, on Virginia Burton, um, and I had shared a sample of, of our formal response letter. Um, that we planned to, to use moving forward, um, just to, to keep that, um. Collaboration back and forth of formal responses. Um, one thing I want to touch on that you mentioned on enter, Entertainment District. Um, it is out to bid. Um, however, it doesn't preclude us from making design changes um during construction. Uh, during the award process. Um, you know, a lot of times we hear that our projects take, take quite a bit. Uh, to get on the street and get moving, so we didn't want to necessarily slow this one down. Um, we are reviewing the comments and. Um, as well as Delaware and the Bike Master Plan, uh, so we will be following up with formal responses. Um, one thing I think as an overall uh follow-up to, to your points, um, is working with Go, or I should say, working with Bike and Ped Board. Um, to get the two sides involved earlier. I think a lot of times, um, you know, we get a plan set. Further along in design and, and obviously by the time we get comments, um, it's later in design. I'd like to work with you, Justin, and uh Bike and Ped Board, um, to get things moving a little earlier in the design process. I think that'll help, help out a lot of this, um, you know, some of the higher level ideas, um, we can work through. Um, earlier in the design process and I think that'll be helpful to both uh the Bike and Ped, um, users in our, in our city.
I would certainly appreciate that, Nolan, and uh, there was another letter that the Bike Board submitted to the council members, which included. Uh, requests to work with the Public Works Department to identify a uh, uh. A project flow chart, you know, I know that there is obviously with different resources and different funding streams of different projects, there's a different process. Um, but oftentimes, a lot of the recommendations that we provide are considered outside of the scope of the project work and we all know that the. Uh, purpose and objectives of these projects are set in the very beginning and so if there is an opportunity for us to develop that process flow chart. Um, and be able to have an opportunity for the Bike Ped Board to engage throughout the process. And so, um, there'd be ways to make sure that recommendations provided are not outside the scope of the project, that would be greatly appreciated.
Great. Okay, uh, Mr. Wingo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity. Listen, I have um become an avid uh bike rider. As of, you know, May, May this year, May, I've clocked over a thousand miles. Uh, since May and I have clocked the majority of those miles on bike paths. I would love to be able to feel much more safe on the streets of Buffalo and ride. And then throughout our streets, if there were dedicated bike paths and lanes. Bike lanes that were, of course, like they suggest, six feet uh wide. It would be incredible for me to be able to just wave at my constituents and them wave back at me, but. I'm on the bike path and, you know, everyone's so serious on the bike path. I mean, everyone has a, ha- has, has something that they're trying to do, but. I, I absolutely believe that, um, if there's a way that I could even include into my capital improvement recommendations. Uh, some of the recommendations of Mr. Booth and Mr. Skipper regarding, um, um, our bicyclists uh safety. Then I'd be up for those conversations, Mr. Finn. So if that's possible, please let me know and I will make sure that we dedicate some of that. Because, uh, I don't know if you guys can see how, 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 how I've changed in the last two months, I've literally lost twenty pounds. And I am, because of health reasons, but I'm still, you know, I think that is a much healthier alternative, uh, emissions uh have been decreased. I just wanted to be safer to be able to travel uh on the streets in the city of Buffalo. So I, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with all of the recommendations, I just wish there's some kind of way that I could include these into my capital improvements if that's possible. Mr. Finn?
I think Mr. Finn is gone. No, I'm. Oh, oh, there you are. Sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Finn?
Yes, certainly glad to hear Councilor Wingo that that you've taken to that and made it part of your your exercise routine. That's that's great. You know, I'd be interested to hear some some feedback about what types of bicycle facilities a relatively newer rider, even with 1,000 miles, if it's all off path, that's different. What types of facilities you would feel safest in because there's there's different levels of facilities and you know, Justin or Nolan could explain this to you in detail, but what we have have found and what even is sites in the bicycle master plan is fully separated facilities like the the cycle track that we're building on Niagara Street are looked at as the safest for on on street facilities, you know. Paint helps because it gives everyone the designation to know where everyone should be, but you know, paint's not going to keep a driver from, you know, meandering off into into a bike lane and potentially coming into conflict. So one of the things that I'd certainly like to hear from from yourself or from any cyclist or what types of facilities are interested in seeing and what are some of the other, you know, routes and locations that you'd like to see improvements on?
So I can speak to your point, Mike, and just, you know, from Go Bike's perspective, the Bike Ped Board's perspective, and what we've been hearing from the community and I think Councilmember Wingo's comment that most of your 1,000 miles of riding is impressive. I've only got about 660 myself, so you've got me beat. But it's all on bike paths, right? So you're on these paths because you don't feel comfortable riding with traffic. You feel safer, you feel more comfortable. And so, you know, Public Works deserves a lot of accolades for their work on Niagara Street, our first protected bicycle facility in the city. From all the research we're seeing around the country and around the world, anywhere from 60 to 70% of the population feels more comfortable riding on streets when they're physically separated from traffic. You know, there's streets that I'll ride on on a daily basis, you know, by myself, but that certainly changes when I'm riding with my wife or if I'm riding with my daughter. You know, that changes with age, that changes with ability and your physical impairment and whatnot. And we know, you know, I think we've gotten, the city and myself has gotten some critiques of, you know, what are we designing for 1% of the population if they're out there riding? We only have 1.6% of city residents commuting to work by bicycles. What are we making these investments for? So I think it's really essential that if we're going to continue to make investments in safe bike infrastructure for the residents, that we really make it so it's safest for the largest segment of the population. I would love to be able to have my daughter ride her bicycle to school every day and know that she will get there in one piece safely. Right now, living on the lower west side and her going to school just on the east side of downtown, there's no way that I would ever let her do that by herself. And so that's what we're after, you know? How do we create a livable city where we feel safe letting our kids ride their bikes to school, that we don't aren't going to be run off the road? And these are the types of things that I think many of our, many in the community respond to on a regular basis. Not everybody necessarily wants bike infrastructure, but there isn't a single person that I have not spoken to or heard from that does not want to see traffic slow down on their neighborhood streets and bike facilities is a great way to also help do that, which slows speeds down for for vehicles while at the same time making it safe for other users. So I think this is tremendous opportunity. But, you know, a word of caution, and while Niagara Street has been, is going to be in a phenomenal project, I remember working with the community group with Vision Niagara and others on that project back in 2010. Here we are in 2020 and that project is under construction. It's, we can't wait a decade for every single street to get done and there needs to be projects that we can do today, tomorrow, next year, that can start making a significant difference to really have that positive impact that we want to see in our neighborhoods.
Yeah, I'd like to concur with that. I want to thank Justin and Commissioner Finn and the other people that were involved with the Niagara Street hurdle avenue design. You guys know I like going to Montreal in Quebec every summer and one of the things that I do there is I look at architecture, walk around, just look at things. And they have a lot of bike paths in the city of Montreal. Montreal's on a mountain. It's colder than Buffalo. They probably get less snow than us, but it stays longer because of the coldness there. And I remember talking to a police officer there and he, I asked him, I said, you know, when did these bike paths begin? Because they have the separate separate paths there. And he brought up some of the same arguments that Justin said were used to criticize us in Buffalo, were used to criticize people in Montreal. Less than 1% of the people ride their bikes. You know, we're on a mountain, people aren't going to ride in the winter time. I forget what he told me the stats were at that time, but it was like 6% of people year round ride their bikes to and from work in downtown. Well, during the summer, it's higher, during the winter, it's lower. And it was amazing because at about 3:30, 4 o'clock, I was in downtown Montreal and I was just just sort of hanging out on one of the corners watching things and the cop said, he goes, go stand here at such and such a time and watch what happens. I couldn't believe the number of bikes, people that were coming home from work and it was a mixture, you know, younger, older, men, women, I, you know, I couldn't say there was one demographic that was using the bike path. And so I think that, yep, the numbers might be low right now, but eventually I believe that they will increase. I'm embarrassed though to say this, Wingo, you got me by about 10 times. I'm barely at 100 miles this year, but I have been riding to people's houses, dropping off stuff, socially distancing myself in visiting constituents. So I've done most of my riding on streets and, you know, there is a safety issue there, you know, but I want to commend what we're doing and that we are moving forward and I agree with Justin, you know, I'd like to do a project that we start talking about in 2020 that gets done maybe in 2022. But I am happy to say that the Niagara Street, when it first got brought up in 2010, I don't think anybody would have thought we'd have separate bike paths for that. And there was a group of us that fought very, very hard and I'm very proud that the North District or part of the North District is one of the first places to have these separate bike lanes and I do certainly hope that we get more as time goes on. Hey, I believe we could table this?
Just one more quick question.
Mr. Noakowski, sorry.
Just to circle back on the on the traffic permits for the for the crosswalks, Commissioner Finn, will, or in Justin?
Yeah. Nolan, unless you know, do we know who's got those permits? I didn't see those those come across my desk.
Yeah, I'll double check with Eric and we can follow up with both Councilman Noakowski and Justin.
Yeah, that's, that's no problem. We can turn those around relatively quickly. I think this is the third season we've worked with Go Bike on these types of projects. So they're they're relatively easy. We just got to make sure that they might be lost in our workflow with remote work. So we'll, we'll take care of it.
Thank you. I'm excited for them. Thank you.
And I just want to add real quickly before you guys table this item. There, we have limited data on bicycle pedestrian volumes. It's not something that we collect on a street by street basis like we do vehicles, but for the limited data that we are, that we do have out there during COVID, there's been a 3,000% increase in bicycling in the city across the region and 1,000% increase in pedestrian activity based on the data from Nitec. And so now more than ever, people are looking at looking at walking and cycling as ways to get around and particularly for some of our essential workers who are concerned about public transit right now. So anything that we can do to continue to work on this process, to improve workflow, get work with Public Works early on on the scope of these projects and to do more things in which we can get projects happening quicker than 10 years, you know, there we have a willing and able partner in order to to do this.
Motion remains to table seconded by Mr. Bowman. Do we have an advance?
Yes, item number seven, special run to pick up electronics and tires.
Motion to revisit item number seven.
Motion to revisit item number seven. This was one, Mr. Commissioner Finn, that there was some questions for you. This was Mr. Wyatt, if you want to just briefly explain to him what it was?
Yeah, this is electronics and the tires. And as I said to my colleagues driving into City Hall yesterday, there was a bunch of tires on a couple of lawns. So, you know, as soon as we can get this done, I think the prettier our community, because we're getting a lot of complaints. I mean, it's not a few, a lot of complaints about the number one, the dumping, but there's a lot of electronics in tires. I mean, I'm sure you've heard from Commissioner the the issues with the electronics and the tires.
Yes, and what I've, I've asked my staff to do is to put together an analysis of what the cost would be to do more pickups for, well, actually, I shouldn't say more because we're not picking them up right now. We just allow people to drop them off. So to do pickups for tires and for electronics waste, we'll put that together and provide a response. And then concurrently, I know there's also some resolutions out there about illegal dumping. This all goes hand in hand because much of what I think you're describing, Councilmember Wyatt, is actually illegal dumping. And I think if we can get our arms around the whole process, we can come up with a solution that isn't going to cost the city an excessive amount of money. Because I think that there's, there's some people who just don't understand, aren't able to bring us tires or e-waste. And I do want to add that we do provide a program where senior citizens can call 311 and schedule a pickup for e-way. So we do have that that part of things covered. However, I also think there's people who are just taking advantage and not trying to comply with our programs or they're not able to because they're a commercial user and they're just dumping. And I think that that group, we need to handle with, without costing the the city money because they they really should be able to fund the disposal of their waste, in my opinion.
Commissioner, are we looking at any type of technology? Because I think that you are right on point. Right now, we've said that we don't have special trash pickup right now and people are still putting out large things of trash. Is there any way that we can utilize technology for those people who are having those infractions? I mean regularly, because I know that we talked about some type of scanning before a long time ago. Do we have that capability? Is there any type of capability out there for things like that?
Did you say scanning? I don't think I'm familiar with what you had talked about before.
Well, there was some units that I think maybe I saw in Canada where the the trash people were using these units to scan their garbage pickup. And I don't know what it was actually producing.
Okay.
That's some type of technology that I just was asking, do you, are you aware of that type of technology? I thought we talked about it before, but maybe not.
Yes, so there is technology out there that collects data, both some through, I believe, artificial intelligence. There'll just be a camera mounted on the garbage truck and it's taking pictures and through artificial intelligence, technology is recognizing what's there and classifying it in a way, in a way that we could use to help advance our our pickup. There is, there's also technology that that we've used through a pilot program, I believe last fall, where the drivers had a tablet that they were able to use to make reports of garbage that was incorrectly put out, whether it was too much, put in the wrong place, put out on the wrong day, whatever. So there is stuff like that. We did put out an RFP and I I believe at the next council meeting next week, we'll be having a recommendation to you for at least the GPS portion of that technology. But from what I understand, and I'll make sure that we provide more information in the items so that you're fully aware since we're having this conversation, the technology that we're buying is expandable. So, you know, we know we need GPS, that that's an important part of our fleet management program, but the technology now is able to be built upon. So as we're able to find more uses and more funding for that, we can build off of that for additional uses. So I'll definitely look into that and include that as part of the recommendation that you'll be seeing next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say to the commissioner, thank you for being open to this. When I saw this item, it was music to my ears because my staff and I actually, we drive around throughout the years, picking up tires and TVs, but unfortunately, we're we're no match. You know, you drive from Delavan to Genesee, a couple of streets, and I have a full truck of tires and TVs. So I'd love to see and figure out a way where we could, you know, dispose and get the TVs and tires picked up. I also wanted to talk on just the fact that the large items, putting out large items with the trash, I think there's some confusion with the residents on that right now, but what is the actual rule due to COVID? I know we slowed down it, but are we still allowed to put our two items out with our trash or currently?
Yes, yeah. The the two item allowance for trash pickup has been continued throughout the entire COVID time. We did just start bulk trash collection and we released that schedule. If any council members don't have that, I can certainly send that to you. But bulk trash collection started in the Ellicott District this week and will be continuing in all of the council met districts throughout the next two months.
Thanks for clarifying. I just had some calls with constituents confused on that, so thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else? Mr. Wyatt, should we table this?
Motion table.
Yep. Motion to table seconded by Mr. Rivera.
Item 17, reported sale 1315 Delavan East.
Item 17 is open.
Hey, Mr. Bowman, is that you?
Yes. Can we move to approve this item?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Wingo.
Item 29, reported sale 157 gold.
This is all, motion to approve.
A motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Rivera.
Motion to adjourn if there's nothing else.
Okay, I don't don't believe so. Motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Noakowski.